Establishing task and finish groups was agreed by the councillors who were in attendance at that meeting, so I guess make a plea for councillors to attend work programme setting meetings in future.
Thank you for that. Can I just, I missed that last sentence, can you state it?
I'd make a plea for councillors to attend work programme setting meetings in future and take those seriously.
Thank you. So I think we've hopefully now dealt with the legitimacy of having a task and finish group. Do any members have any comments on the task and finish itself? councillor Calvert?
Thank you very much, yes, on the substance, I think this is welcome. On the governance, the terms of reference are a touch vague, if I may say so. It talks about the task and finish group may consider the built environment as the round city. It'd be very helpful to be able to talk to and invite on partner agencies, external agencies, agencies to be scrutinised, such as the police, the county council and so on. It'd be nice, those could be support services if so interpreted, but it might be better to make that clearer that we're talking about partner agencies perhaps.
I mean, I think the terms of reference don't intend to be prescriptive. So if the members of group decided there are particular individuals or bodies that they'd like to bring along to hear from and take evidence, I think that's a very good way to get good scrutiny done. So my reading of these wasn't that it would prohibit that sort of working. So I think it would be acceptable to invite as many people as were necessary in order to get the outcomes that the terms of reference suggest the committee is looking for.
Might I propose then we just add and similar?
Yeah, see no issue with that. So yes, happy to amend to and similar. Emily, did you have anything you wanted to just come in and say at that point? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Necessarily, the terms of reference are quite broad in theme because the first meeting of the task and finish group will do a kind of fact finding exercise and they will develop further lines of inquiry. So there are reporting junctures for the task and finish group to come back to the committee and perhaps further explain the totality of the kind of breadth of the work that you'll be doing.
That's good, I think we're over agreement, I think we're both looking to make sure it's nice and broad.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. councillor Osborne, do I see your hand?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, if it's, ask about getting non-council members, non-councillors onto the task and finish group. For example, representatives from Inclusive Norwich who obviously submitted a request for scrutiny to be, to consider this topic. Personally, I think it would be good to have representatives from Inclusive Norwich on the task and finish group to bring in some of their expertise.
Well, so definitely, as I said, having different voices to be heard in terms of bringing their expertise along. There is a distinction between members of the council and others in terms of the fact that it is us who are the only ones who can make that representation both to scrutiny and then on to cabinet. But I'm keen to get an officer view on the sort of best practice slash legality of bringing non-members on to effectively the recommending body.
So thank you Chair. So just to clarify, so you can invite any expert witness that you want along to any of your meetings, to all of them. They wouldn't have any voting rights, of course, or any, you know, when it comes to you putting recommendations, but they would be there to help you with your key lines of inquiry. And it's for the committee to decide who they want to come along. And if you're halfway through the review and decide that might be somebody else more, you know, who can add even more, you can invite them along at that point. It's that, it's that loose arrangement really.
So they're not, they're not a member of the committee per se, but if the committee determined that having one particular person along to each meeting to help with its deliberations was appropriate, then that would be, that'd be fine within the, in the rules.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay.
It's the, I think, what, I guess maybe I'm trying, we're trying to get across is that these terms of reference aren't supposed to be prescriptive, they are an enabling set of terms of reference to facilitate the best scrutiny that we can possibly get out of it. councillor Maguire?
Thank you Chair. It's interesting you say, earlier you said they're descriptive and you've just said they're not prescriptive. And you can understand my concern of that and in particular, if I, can I find the blessed thing, I never can. Here we go, at the bottom of page six, task and finish groups expect to form ideas, ditum, ditum. To be effective, the group must operate in a manner of mutual trust and respect, of course. Even if members may individually disgroup proposals put forward, once the group has resolved a matter, recognising there is collective accountability for the decision reached. This sounds as though it's whipping of the task and finish group members and that concerns me greatly, particularly in scrutiny, which makes virtue of non-whipping.
You certainly have a different interpretation than that than I do. I think what it says is a discussion happens, a vote happens if necessary, and the group, the body that is that task and finish group is bound by the collective decision. I'll give you an example, at the last scrutiny meeting, there was a vote on the recommendations about SWEAP and winter night shelter provision. I voted against one of the recommendations that was subsequently carried, but when it comes to cabinet next Wednesday, I will present all eight of those recommendations as coming from that committee, because that was the decision of the committee. I might not have agreed with all of them when it came to vote, but that is the collective decision of the committee and that's the one that I will present. So I don't, I don't see the section that you're referring to as being anything different to any other meeting that we take part in in a democratic process, and it certainly doesn't speak to whipping.
Chair, I can't agree with you because unless there is an opportunity for those who dissent from the task and finish have an opportunity to either give a minority report or to show their dissent and their views, otherwise it is whipping.
We may have to agree to disagree on that.
Well, I would, you know, for that reason, I would urge you to recon, the committee to reconsider the wording of that. And this also takes me to another point which concerns me, gain of a kind of findings. It does not need to be politically balanced. I think it is important that the task and finish group needs to be politically balanced. And so I'm suggesting to scrutiny that the two changes, one is it is politically balanced and the other is that there is no binding as to the collective agreements unless there's provision for dissent to be shown.
No, I mean, just out of interest, here's a question to come back to you. In a no overall control council where the administration is in the minority, what benefit would you see of having politically balanced?
It would, it would reflect the democratic, whether it was a minority control or a majority control.
But I mean, I just wonder how it would differ from the way that it's set up.
Because the electorate have chosen whoever their councillors are and therefore by definition have chosen or by consequence have chosen the composition of the council and the membership of this task and finish group should be reflective of that.
Okay, thank you. councillor Osborne, I think you were next.
I thought it would be helpful to direct councillor Maguire to the definition of whipping in the constitution, which is basically an instruction by one party on how to speak or vote on a particular item, including threats, sort of coercive behaviour, not quite coercive behaviour in the general term, but you know what I mean? That's under section 131 of the constitution, so I'd recommend that councillor Maguire look that up.
Thank you. And can I take any other amendments? councillor Patter, I saw your hand up and then councillor, is your hand up councillor Patter? Yeah, thank you. And do you not have a microphone? Yeah. Yeah.
So to councillor Osborne's point on councillors not being serious and when the agenda was set at the beginning of the year, a lot of us were struggling with wellbeing and health and wellbeing issues, so we do take these meetings seriously, we just weren't available then for a host of reasons. Back to the work programme, the terms of reference. Given the council are operating on a shoestring, could somebody break down resourcing a bit more for me on how, yes, this task and finish group will be resourced?
Thank you, can I?
Yep, so, thank you Chair. Just to reassure councillors that the resource for these committees will be taken out of the resource that we currently have and officers will work around that to make sure that they are resourced effectively. On the other point about terms of reference, as you know, overview and scrutiny is non-partisan and any politics should be left at the door before you come in here. So actually, you know, there is no need for it to be political because actually what you're doing is scrutinising completely independently your own thoughts and based on the evidence that you have before you. So as I say, I urge councillors to forget about the political side of this. This is non-partisan and you should actually do your reviews based on what the evidence and the key witnesses, key lines of inquiry that you have before you to get the best end result for council.
Thank you. councillor Davis, then councillor Champion.
Yes, thank you. I was, I was basically going to say what Jan's just said, it doesn't matter whether or not it's politically balanced. The point is they come back, they do the work, they make recommendations to scrutiny, which is politically balanced. So it doesn't, scrutiny do not have to accept the recommendations made by the task and finish group, but I would like to ask if Labour have been whipped to attempt to shut down this task and finish group.
Thank you for that. councillor Champion?
I would just like to say that I'm really pleased to see consensus decision making taken priority and non-partisan committees such as this. I think the public would be welcome to hear that, we're not meant to be partisan. And I just wanted to, for the record, I just wanted to make it really clear that this is not absurd, we should be embracing consensus decision making based on evidence and, you know, an adult approach to the decisions. We are going with button on the shoestring, but by that rationale, we should be putting aside all our differences for the betterment of our city. And I feel like these points are actually detracting from the, you know, this is a really welcome piece of research that, you know, it's a long time coming and so we think that put this aside, move along, we've got lots of things to discuss and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really pleased to see that.
Thank you for that councillor Champion. councillor Maguire, I would like to hear from you a proposal for a formal set of words in amendment, I'd like a second for that and then we'll move to a vote, then we'll move to a vote if necessary on the overall terms of reference, please.
Chair, can I just respond on the point, I've used the word whipping and there is one definition being given, perhaps I should have said by another name.
Okay, so is there a formal proposal to change the terms of reference as presented to the committee today?
Yes, the most important one, I think, is to say that I propose that, well, it's not point numbered, but when we get to the thing marked A near the bottom of page six, that dissenting members can be and are urged to state dissent and reasons for it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Doesn't look like it, does it Chair? Oh, we have.
Councillor, I'll have a second there, well, thank you for that. We've got a resolution proposing seconded to change the wording, all those in favour, please indicate. Thank you, yeah, all those against? That amendment is lost, thank you. Right, well now, we now need to, I think, draw a line under the, this item on task and finish. Can I have any indication from members who are in favour of these being accepted as the terms of reference and move on to what I think will be a very good piece of task and finish? All those in favour, please indicate. Any, any against, please indicate. That is clearly carried, thank you very much. And thank you for the useful input on helping, I think, frame some of the understanding of the way that scrutiny and its governance works. So we now move on to item six, which is scrutiny scoping document. Oh, ah, yes, yeah, I was in such excitement to move on to the next item. Okay. And we want to effectively do that in this meeting now. Yeah, let's. So in effect, councillor Davis and myself are in the, in the task and finish group by default because it will contain one member from each of the four political groups and one other. So could I have a nomination for the Green Group, please? councillor Galvin, yeah, thank you. Any, yeah, well, what I was going to do was I was going to take the one from each group first and then we'll, we'll see about the fifth, fifth person in a minute. So any, any dissent amongst Green colleagues for councillor Galvin being the nominated person? Okay, thank you. And can I have a nomination from the Labour Group, please, for a member? Yeah, councillor Harper, any other for that? No, okay, that's, so that's, that's four out of the five dealt with, in many respects that was the easy bit. Can I have any other members who'd like to nominate to be on that group, please? councillor Osborne, any other hands up at this stage? No, in which case, thank you very much, councillor Osborne is the fifth member for that. And the quorum of the committee, as you will have noted from the document, is three. Have we, we've got everything covered now? Yeah, great, thank you very much. Now we can jump the gun a bit there, but let's move on to item six, HR processes, HR processes, scoping document. Does anyone have anything they wish to say on this document at this stage? Bearing in mind, we're simply talking about the scope of the document, not necessarily litigating the issue itself. councillor Osborne, then councillor Carrington?
Thanks, yeah, I guess my question is whether this covers, I've got two questions to write. First is whether this covers NCSEL, Lion Homes, well as council wholly owned companies. Personally, I think it should because there's obviously been quite a lot of issues with staffing at NCSEL over, over a number of years. The other question is whether it will cover speaking to staff who've left the council because obviously there's been quite a high churn, high turnover of staff in the last few years. It'd be useful, I think, for the council to understand whether there's any reasons for that from staff point of view, why then, why staff might be leaving.
Okay, thank you. Emily, can I possibly, or Jan, or either one get input on that? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. In respect of the first point, it will only cover direct employees of the council. So that does cover Lion Homes because those staff cover dual function. It won't cover NCSEL staff, however, we do provide an HR service to NCSEL, so you would be able to scrutinise the aspects of the service delivery to those companies. In respect of the second point, the committee can request any person to come and give evidence to it. Obviously, you don't have the same power to require somebody to attend as you do with a member of staff, so there wouldn't be necessarily a kind of compulsion for them to come. But one of the things we will certainly be looking at as part of this review is any information coming out of exit interviews.
Does that? Yeah, exactly. So, so I think, I think what you've got in front of you again is quite broad ranging and so I think there is quite a lot of scope for that sort of thing. councillor Carrington?
Thank you. And I just wondered if one of the areas of. Sorry, one of the areas we could potentially consider adding, I can't see anything in there regarding staff management is reviewing the appeals panel and who it covers and how it works for staff at the moment. That was the first thing, I didn't actually hear what councillor Osborne said, but the, I'm not sure he was, who he was talking about intentionally inviting. But is there any scope to invite union representation along, the Chair and Secretary of Unison to address the meeting?
Yes, thank you for that. I was going to raise councillor Fulter McAllister's points myself, but yes, I think inviting union representation, absolutely, that, that would be perfectly fine and within scope. I wonder whether the personnel appeals, can we, can we cover that? I mean, if necessary, could it be a slight addition to the performance management arrangements and personnel appeals or, and picked up within that, within that section?
Yes Chair, so as part of the review, the committee will be able to look at any of the council's people policies and so the appeals panel arrangements form part of the council's grievance policy and also the disciplinary policy. So you would be able to look at that as part of that review of HR policies.
Okay, thank you. councillor Champion and then councillor Maguire?
My experience in other institutions, namely schools, is that there is a high prevalence of non-disclosure agreements, otherwise known as gagging orders. I'm not sure if we do have such a prevalence in this institution and obviously that would be very difficult to scrutinise legally. I'd be interested to know how that would fall under the scrutiny process, what sort of data would be allowed to be looked at and is it something that we would avoid looking at and would it therefore result in further things being brushed under the carpet and never brought to light? I know it's a broad ranging question, but I feel it's pertinent.
It's interesting, I, you know, I'm a school governor with 15 years' experience and you clearly have a much more negative experience of it than, than I do. Anyway, Emily, in terms of any agreements that are reached, could they be in scope?
So you wouldn't be able to scrutinise any individual agreement because obviously it, it says what it is on the tin, non-disclosure. However, you would be able to request statistics about the circumstances in which employees have left the organisation and that would talk about potentially areas where a settlement has been agreed with that staff member.
Yeah, yeah.
So as a supplementary, would we also be able to determine if there has been payouts in relation to non-disclosure agreements and the amounts of money which would be associated with that? Just because I've got. That'd be, for exactly legally not allowed to be looked at as well?
That could be looked at, likelihood would be that that would need, need to be considered in closed session by the committee, but we could provide you with data about, because it's transparency data, about budgets and spend against those kinds of circumstances.
Okay, councillor Maguire?
Thank you Chair. Also, it's interesting, the last point of, because I wasn't aware we got involved with such things, but there we are.
We may not be, we haven't had the data yet.
I just got some comments about those key lines of inquiry and I'm really concerned that we do include, we look at our recruitment processes and in particular, filling of hard fill roles and use of interim expertise. I think it would be important for us to look at this sector wide because we may find that we do use them but far less than other local authorities, or we might use them more, I don't know, but I think a sector wide comparison would be really useful. I also wonder, obviously somebody is concerned about electronic systems and I can understand why, but I wonder if we might slightly amend that to say our systems, including electronic, that's a particular bugbear for somebody because those systems and processes are useful to be examined. And a couple of other things, the, it would be useful for us to look at the updating of policies, the frequency and achievement of updating of policies, along with lengths of time to respond for particular situations and also general methods of communication and frequency and effectiveness of comms between HR and members of staff.
Yeah, thank you for that. Emily, you're noting those Dan, I think, you know, they, they sound reasonable things to me to be, to be in scope. Would we need to do a formal amendment at this stage or just note, note that consensus and it then forms part of the, yeah?
Yes Chair, none of those.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm conscious I need to draw a line under this, but I've got councillors Osborne, Calvert and Champion who would like to say something, so let's, let's counter through this reasonably quickly if we can.
Seconded the importance of interims. And the other point I wanted to make is there's a few teams where, specifically where there seems to have been very high turnover or sickness rates. One of those, it seems to, is in the public domain because the council sent a letter out to tenants in the sheltered housing team where about half the team is, is off sick, it seems, or absent. There's other teams, mine of, I'm not going to say it publicly, but where there's been very, very high turnover. I think it would be useful to look specifically at what's going on in those and that can be in closed session if needed, but yeah, because that has an impact on staff welfare as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. councillor Calvert?
You said earlier about those directly employed by the council? I'm aware that we have a very large number of interims at the moment. Are they employed or are they contractors in this regard?
So those interims that are either agency or directly employed in terms of kind of filling a role in the establishment would be included, so they would come under the umbrella of employees. If we have contracted services which may be provided by an individual, they wouldn't be captured because that's a contract.
So just to clarify, people who are filling a role that would normally be filled by an employee are employees and those who are not auxiliary? Yes, okay, thank you.
Exactly that Chair.
Yeah, thank you. councillor Champion?
I appreciate it. I just wanted to make my point, it's just in relation to key lines of inquiry, approach to increasing the diversity of our workforce. I would just like to highlight that one of the, on LinkedIn, they've changed, they've made dyslexia a skill, which made me very happy because I was able to add that. Neurodiversity is something which I often feel is overlooked and I would like us to explore as part of this, our approaches to incorporating, embracing and hiring neurodivergent people and our processes supporting those people once they're in a role. Because institutions are often quite hostile environments to neurodiverse people, but we need people who can think realistically to really move forward into the 21st century. So I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, thank you. No, that, that seems very reasonable, unless there's any objections to anything anyone's heard, which I think, thank you very much for all the contribution, I think they've been very helpful, we'll, we'll update the, the scoping document to reflect that and thank you. Let's move on to item seven then, which is the debate not hate scoping document. If anyone have any comments they wish to make on this, councillor Osborne?
Yeah, the way it's framed at the moment, I have no problem with it, I think it's a good thing to discuss, but I think that discussing councillors' security shouldn't necessarily be something that's discussed in public. Where I think there is value in discussing is how the council deals with or responds to, for want of a better word, sensitive topics. So for example, when people come to protest about a particular issue or make their views known at City Hall, how the council deals with that, what the procedures are in place, how we use. we use symbolism of City Hall, how we communicate with tenants and residents. So that kind of. Is that, is that better? Yeah. So I, I think there's scope for discussing councillor security not necessarily in the scrutiny committee, because also it affects all councillors, not just scrutiny members. But this scrutiny topic, I think, should be more focused on how the council interacts with the public.
It's an interesting one about where it's discussed, because some councils have looked at this in the form of a motion. So that would then come to full council and all 39 councillors would have a, an opportunity to, to speak, to speak on it. Obviously, we're looking at it as, you know, in the context of a, of a scoping document. Yeah. Does anyone else have any sort of comments they'd like to make on councillor Osborne's comments and question? Councillor Harper.
Thank you, Chair. It's not really a comment. I'm just not sure I understand what's being suggested. So if that could be clarified perhaps.
Thank you. Well, obviously, there's an LGA campaign and we're looking to assess ourselves against the self-assessment toolkit. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to, if you've got, if, yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, okay. Yeah. Sorry. I thought you were talking about the scrutiny in general. Yeah.
I guess on how we, on this LGA bit, the councillor security is done separately from scrutiny, where all councillors can be involved. And it's not necessarily in public. Plus, I know there's things I would want to say about security impacting me that I wouldn't necessarily want to say in public. But that there is also value, I think, in scrutiny, looking at how we interact with the public. So for example, when, when Palestinian, pro-Palestinian protesters came to City Hall, whenever it was last year or earlier this year, how, how the council responds to that and processes around that. So that's why I think the scrutiny, not necessarily just the Gaza thing, but how the council interacts with the public on, what a better word, sensitive topics. So that makes sense. And do the, do the LGA councillor security bit separately with, with all councillors, not just scrutiny members.
So potentially in the form of a member workshop or something like that. Dan, do you want to come in at this?
Yeah. So just to be clear, although the self-assessment toolkit is not all about, part of it is about councillors' security and we would never discuss what we have in place for individual councillors. But it is also a tool to assess where we are with the code of conduct, how we act ourselves in council meetings. So it's all, it's about civility in public life and the Nolan principles. So there's a whole tranche, but the self-assessment tool also looks at what we can do as a council to, to help you train and be better prepared to help you with your constituents.
So I wonder if in, in the same way that, you know, the audit committee looks at, or a subset of the audit committee looks at the self-assessment toolkit and then effectively reports that back into full council. Actually, what we're effectively suggesting here is that scrutiny looks at it and then, and we are a subset of full council. Okay, councillor Champion.
Wasn't going to comment on this, but I can't help myself. This idea of arrangements in place for safe and respectful protest, expression of opinion at public meetings. When we did have protests in full council or outside the doors, the council was forced to stop. No one except myself, no one got up to go and then address those protesters. And the reason that they were, you know, they needed somebody, what, one of the aspects of that, they had, you know, they had come to protest at us as an institution, not as us as councillors. And I think the training needs to incorporate that. My worry is, is that in an endeavour to keep councillors safe, that we might exclude, you know, the ability of people to come into the council. And I feel that incidence as a specific case study, we should look at because I felt it was handled incredibly badly. And again, as a scrutiny committee, I feel this is a safe place to say this, but I do think that was handled very badly. And the aftermath, the, the way that it was dealt with afterwards, I don't think was handled very well either. And so, you know, if we're talking about having debate not hate, then the council and councillors and the institution of the council needs to engage with debate in a meaningful way. Otherwise, we're going to cast the seeds and grow the trees of hate.
So that is completely what the self-assessment toolkit will provide. And we will look at how we deal with people who may want to come in and make representations to make sure that we can do that with the agreed protocol, which is acceptable to councillors and to the members of the public. So that self-assessment tool will go through all of that. We can also get some support from the Joe Cox Foundation, who looks at and has got some, you know, really good advice on how we can do that to make it safe for it's not just councillors, but it is members of the public as well. So that is within that whole toolkit and from the LGA guidance as well. So I think it's a really good review to do and that we should do it. But I certainly think that any recommendations that you come up with should be reported back to full council for you to debate.
Yeah, thank you. And scrutiny needs to be the starting point for that and the toolkit to inform that process. I'm going to start at that end and work my way down. And then we do need to draw a line under this. So councillor Maguire first, please.
Thank you, Chair. I must say, I was really pleased at that particular meeting, that the security was managed in the way that it was. I felt a lot happier knowing that we did have officers and additional people looking after us. And I've just got some specific comments to make on the indicators of success that I think would be useful. Personal safety of councillors, I would like to add, and candidates, because although they're not elected, they, as party members, we have a party and in consequence of being a candidate, they too can come under attack. And I would like this, you know, this to be considered. I think we, it would be useful to look at some of the intimidation that occurs of councillors. And we've had a very recent example, but you know, not, not for the first time, of groups releasing councillor details. And I would think that would be very useful to look at how we deal with those personal details and our responsibilities. I think the other thing that's worth bringing, and you know, it's been touched in one sense by the monitoring officer, and that's about the behaviour of councillors and the standards expected. And that is in particular of sowing myths and telling total untruths, which can raise people's anger levels unnecessarily. And so it's really important that all of us, you know, behave in the best way and be careful not to spread myths which are convenient, but not true.
Thank you for that. And I think I'm just going to pick up on the item related to candidates. That would be out of scope for our work because they're not connected to the council at that point. That's something for the individual political parties to, to pick up as far as their safety and security is concerned. If they are, if they are elected, then yes, that becomes an issue for the council, but up until that point, they are, they're not a councillor and therefore covered. Any other members who wish to indicate anything? I'm going to start, if I can have all the hands up. Okay, just councillor Osborne then, we'll then move away from this after that.
Thanks. If we are looking at this in terms of like that point about safe and respectful protest, I think it'd be worth involving people who have attended council meetings in the past, whether they've come to ask questions, whether they've come to attend protests either inside City Hall, outside City Hall, et cetera, to ask them what their experience of it is. I'd also broadly agree with what councillor Maguire says about not spreading myths. I think that should also apply to not suggesting that people are a threat or in any way violent or intimidating when they're not, they're coming to protest.
I mean, yeah. I suspect it will be a challenge to identify a representative sample of groups, particularly those who came masked up to a council meeting, therefore wishing to maintain their anonymity. So how we, we would then identify them in order to find out their rationale for attending and what they'd hope to achieve. That, that becomes more challenging. Councillor Fox.
Just on that note, lots of people come to a meeting masked for their own safety, for health reasons since Covid. A lot of people.
Of course they do. It's unusual.
Do that for safety.
It's unusual for large numbers to come on that, that basis though. And difficult to then work out who they are. And I'd like to draw a line under this now. We've got a few notes taken about changes we can make and so this, we'll then operate on that basis. Thank you very much. So could I invite to the table, please? Councillor Kendrick and the leader, councillor Stonard. And I think we've also got Andy Starkey. Yeah. And if you'd like to come along as well. In essence, anyone who is vaguely connected becoming to talk to us about the City Hall item would be great. Thank you. Just to, for the benefit of members, we've got this report that we're now maybe into City Hall reimagined is two parts. There's an exempt part of the report and there's a public part of the report. In a minute, I shall ask councillor Kendrick to outline his, give his introduction on this. And I would then like you as members to keep your questions initially between pages 13 and 23, I think it is, 22. The above the line item, if there is anything that needs to be asked on the exempt appendix at that stage, we'll need to take a resolution on excluding the members of the public for that. So on that basis, pages 13 to 22, and councillor Kendrick, if you'd like to give your introduction, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Today, we are asking for your scrutiny of the strategic outline case and recommended options for the future of our iconic City Hall. Our stunning grade two plus listing building has been the seat of local government since 1938. And as custodians of this treasured asset, you must ensure that it is protected and fit for the future. The reality is that to maintain this wonderful building, we spend in the region of about £2 million a year, a figure that can only increase over time. Staying as we are and doing nothing is simply not an option. And by addressing this, you have the opportunity to rethink the purpose and uses of this, the building in a way that benefits our entire city. The strategic outline case to reimagine City Hall has identified the potential to create up to £102 million in economic benefits for the city as a whole, depending on the scale of options taken forward. This represents a huge option, opportunity for the council, not only to create revenue, but to create a future for this building, which has far wider benefits to the city. We also know that we must make the best use of the building to provide inclusive and accessible services and allow council colleagues to work in a more open and modern way. We must realise these benefits while reducing the environmental impact of the building as part of us moving closer to our net zero targets. We are at the start of this journey and the strategic outline case has been considered a wide range of possible future uses for this building, identifying the viable options we can, can consider taking it to the next stage. Next stage would see the development of the options with a full outline business case, setting out clear a route to delivering change at City Hall. It will provide us with many architectural technique and technical and financial reports required for a building of this nature to move into the planning, procurement and construction stage. This year, we are conducting extensive public consultation for our new community-led plan, which will demonstrate support for City Hall to provide opportunities for growth and better outcomes for the city. We also held a workshop with partners from key organisations across the city to explore opportunities for City Hall to contribute to the city's economy. This is fed into our strategic outline case and reinforced that the City Hall building is cherished territory to access the entire city and that people would like to see it become more open and accessible. We have not, we have not simply assumed what the public wants, as the project is still at a much earlier stage than that. If the cabinet agrees to take the options forward to a full business case wider engagement, this will, this will take place with residents, businesses, partners and the voluntary and creative sector. We are clear that if this work proceeds, consultation will be vital to making the right decision for the city as a whole and for the people of Norwich who will be fully involved. And I'll hand over to our officers who will take your questions. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much, councillor Kendrick. Before you hand over, councillor Stonard, did you have anything you wish to add to councillor Kendrick's very thorough introduction?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to thank the, the number of officers are here today to, to help us with our deliberations. And also thank you for the briefing that the various groups had earlier in the summer, which I think has been very helpful to get an understanding on what we're here to, to, to talk about. So in the context of pages 13 to 22, I wonder if I can invite any officers just to, if there's anything you want to say, or if not, I'll hand it over to members who can ask questions within those pages. Okay, well, we'll go straight to members. Councillor Osborne.
This isn't really a question, more of a suggestion. I don't know if it's appropriate at all, but we've got representative from Inclusive Norwich in the audience. Sorry, I was just saying there's represented from Inclusive Norwich in the audience. I wonder if it would be worth asking if, if they can participate as well.
I'm not at this stage. We're still, this is a officers, members and members piece of work. Later on, that may will.
I think it would, yeah, it'd be interesting to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, councillor Kendrick said that there was workshops with various group stakeholders. I want, what was the feedback from that? And particularly around the sort of the, the process for that and whether there was sort of further follow-on from those workshops?
Mark, are you going to come in on that?
Yeah, so we've had extensive sort of, so the engagement at this stage has been trying to take a really long list of options down to a preferred option so that we can get, we're still at a really early stage of the process. So as you were, we've engaged with all, all groups in the city council. We've engaged with various stakeholders in the city. The plan for the next stage is to do a far more detailed consultation. So all we want to do is we want to be, guide to the public with realistic options for, for City Hall and not, you know, not, not have things on the table which are, which are, which are simply not, not feasible. So that's, we're at that really early stage of taking a really long list of options down to, down to the shortlist. So.
I guess I'm more interested in how the, the workshop process itself and whether there was feedback from that on how that was and whether you got the, the sort of information that you wanted from that, whether the stakeholders who took part in that felt that they were able to give the information that they wanted to give.
I believe so. I mean, obviously, we've had quite a wide range of feedback. And actually, what was really interesting as part of some of those workshops was that, you know, their interest was not just with City Hall, as you might expect, it was with the, you know, the areas, the public realm around City Hall, the marketplace and, and, you know, we're looking at City Hall today, but that was quite helpful because, you know, some of the other work we're doing and we'll come back in the future with is work around the public realm and the marketplace as well. And, you know, what we can do in terms of the civic core. So that was really helpful for us. So that, that was one of the key sort of areas of feedback we had back, but the feedback was quite wide and wide ranging. I think the SOC does summarise some of those conversations, which is obviously in the exempt appendix that you've got before you're doing.
So just sorry, one more. So is there anything that you'll sort of take from that first round of, of engagement to then adapt how to do the next round? To make it more in-depth, for example, or more focused on particular topics or?
There's still, there's still quite a bit of work to do on the project because we are at such an early stage. There's a whole, a whole raft of things that we need to, we need. There, there's, there's still, there's still quite a bit of work to, to do on the project because we are at such an early stage. There's a whole, a whole raft of things that we need to, we need to do some more research. So one of the things we did as an example, and we've already, we're already done, we'll feed into the next stage is we've done an M and E audit, for example. So, you know, environmental considerations were quite key in coming out of this. So we've done an M and E order with sorry, apologies, mechanical and electrical. So one of the biggest costs coming out of any renovation to your hall is is the mechanical electrical costs of the building. Also, that was fundamental to sort the operation of the building. So we, we, there are some areas we'll look into in more detail. Something else that's very much in the forefront of mind and came across was things around accessibility of the building. So again, we've done an accessibility audit, all things that we've actually been doing in the background to sort pave the way into the next phase of the project, subject to getting the relevant member agreement. So there are areas where we've identified and done a bit of work in the background to just put us in a good place for the next phase of the project.
Thank you. I'm going to bring Andy in next, if that's okay.
A great question and the, a lot of the feedback, because it was the first session, there's a lot of discussion on, you know, this is just creating an idea of this is something that can happen. So there was no technical aspects of this is what it will be because those decisions simply haven't been made. But there was huge energy in that room around the role that the council has in engaging and supporting the local institutions, local businesses, tackling some of the sort of market failures that we've seen. Yeah, there's a lot of the, the skills economy leaves Norwich City and actually the opportunity to create some of those spaces and foster some of that space in the city hall will be really welcome, particularly with the universities and others that sort of start up grow businesses. So we also spoke a lot around, as Mark touched on, the public realm and how that can be used as space for presentation of arts, theatre, culture, those kind of events and how the ground floor may well help in those, those activities too. All with that driving a sort of a higher narrative, a really engaging council with the, with the sort of local businesses and the opportunities that the building has to promote integration with business and local stakeholders.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still, I'm still sort of trying to get at what the, the consultation process or the engagement process itself and whether there were sort of lessons learned from the first, not even lessons learned, but sort of things that you can take from the first process in informing the second process so that the council gets what's once out of it. Because it sounds like we've got a huge range of, like, good comments, a huge range of, of comments. And to make sure that the people participating or the groups participating get what they want from that engagement, if that makes sense. So I, I think because there's such a big range of comments here, I'm more focused on, on the engagement process.
Yeah. So I think the, the, how we move forward into the SOC, into the next stage, there will be a detailed stakeholder engagement plan, and that's to use a bit of a high level term. But actually, there's a huge amount of interest. So we need to design what the, you know, who, who are the relevant groups? And we do that in consultation with with officers and, and members and work out the kind of, you know, at the point at which we want to start to present things. Because I think the workshop was good in terms of getting ideas and, and opportunities. But what we really need to do is sort of start to funnel some of those around. Okay, well, what are the specific objectives from local businesses, key stakeholders, the public and the communities? And there'll be a sort of regimented process through the whole next stage that will engage in, in those and drive those discussions.
And will the, the stakeholders from the first stage have a say in that stakeholder plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Sorry, that's probably a very simple answer to you.
I think possibly we, we can draw a line under this, this.
That's, that last thing.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. So just so that members are aware and whose hands I've seen when, we've got councillors Calvert, Maguire. Oh, yeah.
I mean, just to provide reassurance to the scrutiny committee, at the next stage, engagement process will be further opened out. So absolutely intention is not that people get consulted or engaged once and that's it. Actually, that was the start of the process. And as we go into more detail, there's going to be much greater stakeholder engagement and continued stakeholder engagement to make sure that actually we understand that we will work together to get to the first solution.
Yeah, thank you. So it's councillors Calvert, Maguire, Davis and Champion. So Calvert first, please.
Thank you, Chair. You, you talked about the, the public realm and lots of the public realm is controlled by Norfolk County Council. As we saw with the Surrey State of Exchange Street, their view as to the prime use of the public realm is very different from the city councils. How supportive have they been and have we've been engaging with them positively and purposefully?
So if I could just answer that, absolutely. I mean, we have been engaging with them early stage. Indeed, we had a workshop only this morning with the officer team on, on various options for potentially improving the public realm around the building. So we have engaged AARP or to undertake some early studies with a whole range of options. And we are discussing those for fairly obvious reasons with the county officers in early stage to understand where they're coming from and also to set out some of the benefits of some of the improvements which could be made to the public realm. So at the moment, it is a collaborative process and our intention is that that continues.
Thank you for that supplementary. Yeah.
It sounds like we're being very positive in our engagement with them. Have they indicated that they are positive about our possible?
Being very closely both, you know, with senior officers within the county council and then with those officers who are, you know, the, I didn't want to say the engineer or transport department. And we've been doing that for fairly obvious reason to make sure that they're on board. So we don't have a scenario where we've got some great ideas. And, you know, six months down the line, they say that might be fine, but it's going nowhere. So a key part of that has been building that relationship to understand right from the outset, what we are proposing, why we're proposing it, what the options are and why they would be beneficial.
Councillor Maguire, please.
Thank you, Chair. And first of all, I'd like to thank the office for the workshop they organised for members. I know not many didn't turn up. I think there were three or four of us. But we were certainly listened to and appreciate that. And officers did not show any frustration, whereas I had been an officer inviting you know, nearly forty councillors and only three or four turn up. Well, well done for hiding any frustration. My, my questions in particular, some of the myths that are going around and I'll address them to councillor Kendrick for, for once. Someone should ask, some of the myths about we're going to sell City Hall. We're going to turn it into a hotel and so on. First of all, has the, is this administration? You know, is that an option? Secondly, perhaps more importantly, has this ever been a case? Has any, you know, this council since nineteen thirty-eight talked about selling City Hall? But the other question I'd like to ask them, so how do you think these inaccuracies have arisen?
Councillor Kendrick.
Yes, I think that's the work of the creative writing department, to be perfectly honest. This is, I have seen online some of the, the myths which are, which are simply not true. We, we want to do is to improve this building for the benefit of the whole of the city, because at the end of the day, it needs to reach its full potential. And that is what the whole project is all about. So at the end of the day, I think people will see when it works finally carried out, a, a much more useful City Hall that, which will benefit the whole of the city. And I think that's what we should all be wanting.
Councillor Stunard.
Yeah, I want to be absolutely clear that the administration has clear red lines around this project, which we've been clear about. So it's disappointing that when we've been so clear that there's misunderstanding. So City Hall will remain the base for the city council. Where there will be no work done on any of the listed areas. That includes the entire first floor where we are now. All these, the mayor, Lord Mayor's Parlor, these meeting rooms, the council chamber, all of those areas will be untouched, as will be listed outside of the building. That's really, really important to understand. The other thing I need to make absolutely clear because it has appeared online in ways which are unclear or misleading is the area that we're looking at options, a variety of options for, which has included the infamous hotel, which is just one option. There are options around housing, there's options around office space. And that is the empty land to the rear of City Hall. It's not within City Hall. No part of City Hall is going to be converted into a hotel or residential accommodation. That will not happen. That is not an option. And I can't make it any clearer than that. I mean, what do I have to say to make it clearer that that is the case? And then finally, no part of City Hall is going to be sold off. No part of City Hall is going to be sold off. I hope that's clear because I've been clear up till now and still this misinformation gets circulated. And, you know, I'm not going to speculate as to the, the source of that, those rumours and that misinformation. I'll leave you to think about that for yourselves and you know who you are.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Very interesting from Mike there. The accelerated outcomes switches on page eighteen. I wanted to ask a few questions about the workspace pilot. And it says that these are being progressed and any proposals to take them forward will be reported back to cabinet in due course. So the workspace pilot, how long is that intended to be for? And will all departments be testing it as, as they go? Will it be, you know, like a certain department will be in it for a month at a time and then, then they all get to feedback? Or would it just be a you know, just a specific department that feeds back and what kind of time period?
If I can answer that question. So we're, we're working up the proposals as we, as we speak. And I didn't, an area has been identified for where physically the new way of working could be created, up to about ninety workspaces. What we are now doing is basically working through with senior officers in terms of should it be one group of staff? Could it be several groups of staff working, you know, on themes or thematically, you know, or even groups of different from different public sector organisations? So looking at a range of options at this point of time to work them down into a preferred option. So I don't have the answers for that exact piece yet, but the intention is really, we're looking to start that pilot early next year. And I mean, it is, the word pilot is gives you clue to what we're intending to do is to aid, to, to help to understand the best way which we as an organisation can work in future, but also to give us the opportunity to trial different ways before effectively, you know, we go into the future permanent, you know, sort of refilling to the building.
I think it's, it's interesting actually, and thank you for the question. I think thematic working in particular could bring some real benefits to, to the council, that sort of sharing of experience between council officers who maybe currently aren't working with each other and could see some sort of, it could be a definite win, win, wins going on there. So I think councillor Davis, did you have any other questions at this stage? No, that's fine. Thank you. Councillor Champion then, please.
I'm very pleased to be here today and have read this report and it's brilliant and it's very interesting. I like the idea that we're consulting people, that the people of Norwich are going to be fully engaged and involved, that our engagement process is open and collaborative. These all sound great. I love it. Yeah. Always a little bit, you know, a little bit worried when I hear about consultations because I find that they often go a little bit awry and people aren't heard. I'm also interested in the red lines which were outlined. I mean, that's great to hear that there are red lines as parameters. It's good to have boundaries. And you've identified what you don't want. So I just want to outline, I feel like this is a good opportunity to maybe highlight some of the things that I personally would want of people have highlighted to me, for instance, and this is in relation to accelerated outcomes. I noted there's some interesting accelerated outcomes and there is opportunity for accelerated outcomes, which is fantastic. The first of which would be that we still don't have a tourist information bureau. And that we have offloaded so many things now to the shoebox that possibly an accelerated outcome could be to bring the tourist information bureau back into the building. And that would be a great benefit to the city centre. I think that's something maybe if we've got red lines of what we don't want, maybe we should have some red lines of what we do want. And I would suggest that's something that the people of Norwich I think do want from everyone I've spoken to. Some years ago, we had a organisation that opened that had a facility for young people, teenagers specifically. This was shut down during Covid. There's a lot of angst and worry about the mental health crisis with young people at the moment. This building would be an ideal place to create a facility to allow young people to have a venue somewhere to be. Everywhere that teenagers are is where they're not meant to be and it creates a culture of distrust. We've got a lot of ageism towards young people. And I would like, I think this is an ideal opportunity. So seeing as we're discussing parameters and red lines, I'd like us to think about ambition. And, you know, I ask this, I don't ask this, I'm not being cynical about this. And I appreciate sometimes that, you know, that there can be sort of expressions which can, but I'm asking honestly, if we can actually use this opportunity. I mean, there's so many good things here. There's so many good things. But it worries me that, you know, engaging with young people is really difficult. And so I would suggest possibly outreach to schools during the engagement process, City College, MAP. And, you know, the university has been mentioned already, but I mean, who are you speaking to in the university? And so I would suggest that when we're thinking about consultation, we could go much further. My worry is that we're going to be speaking to the the great and good of Norwich who, and that we're not going to be engaging in a full and transparent manner. And so I appreciate, and I, I, it's really encouraging that you're shaking your head, Mr Stunard. I find that genuinely encouraging because it means that you really believe that this process can work. But these are some of my suggestions. These have been aired to me by members of the public. And being that I'm subbing here today, I just thought it was a really good opportunity just to bring them forward. And I bring them forward in a, you know, in a genuine manner, not in some partisan, I'm trying to trip anyone up. Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Stunard, did you wish to response? I think that sort of probably that response needs to come from a political one rather than an officer.
More than happy to.
So I think your mic might have gone off.
I was shaking my head because of course we're going to have a proper full consultation. That's the whole point. And actually, I'm not going to sit here and suggest what I think City Hall should be used for. I could make the sort of suggestions you've just made. I think we've probably got all our pet, got our own pet projects that we'd like to, to see. I know some people want to see it used as a wedding venue. There's all sorts of suggestions. This is not the time to be inputting that. This is the time to be looking at what is feasible and viable. So we don't unnecessarily raise expectations of the public and then go out and talk to them in that context and hear what they've got to say. So I think it's really, really important. That's why you have a process like this to make sure that it's fair and equitable and that people's voices are heard, but also that expectations are managed. As I say, we've all got our own pet projects. I'm not chipping mine in. I've not suggested anything that I'd like to see. And it's helpful to hear that those, you know, you've got those ideas. The time to pitch that in is later on when we get to that stage.
Very briefly, if you would.
The reason I'm airing these suggestions, and they're not my pet projects. These are things which have been aired to me. The reason I'm airing them now is because if we whittle down the range of options and then present a range of options which are not including things which people want, then it's not actually fair and equitable. If we want to do this properly, I suggest that, you know, we really need to work together. The scrutiny is, you know, this is consensus building, isn't it? This isn't meant to be a debate. I'm, I'm just trying to contribute in a positive manner.
Yeah, the, the points well made. Thank you. So just so that members know whose hands I've seen, so you can put them down. Padda, Carrington, Maguire, Fox and Calvert. And Osborne. So councillor Padda, please.
Thank you. Thanks. I think this is a really positive move for city council. I just wanted to say that. But in terms of scrutinising this, this work, I think for me, it's too early to, it's still at scoping stage for any meaningful scrutiny. However, to address some of your questions around consultation and engagement, you have a timeline on page nineteen. You can expand that out to start finding and find kind of points along those timelines to add your engagement and state consultation. I have also developed an stakeholder engagement toolkit to address some issues on meaningful engagement. And I would be over the moon to share that with you.
Thank you very much for that offer. Hopefully. Hopefully officers have heard that and will approach you for your expertise. Thank you. Councillor Carrington, next please.
Thank you. Looking through the report, it looks like potentially some of the options may have nutrient neutrality implications. I'm querying if it's possible to get an update on where we are with that now.
Thank you.
Well, if I could probably just answer just briefly. Quite separately, members will be aware that there is a report going on in to the next cabinet concerning a recommendation to enter into the JV with other authorities in terms of the nutrient neutrality offset a company, if I could put it that way. So the point being is that the council are looking at a range of options to make sure that we have sufficient credits. In terms of the credits or, and we will have to think through the details as we develop the project to the next stage, if that's, you know, if that gets approved at cabinet next week. But and of course, issues about nutrient neutrality alongside a whole host of other measures ones which we'll need to consider.
Okay. Thank you very much for that question. Here we have next councillor Maguire, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just, a couple of things really, one arising from the other. And councillor Stunard, she covered about 70% of what I was going to say about we've all got ideas. We've all got things that should be included. The workshop that I attended, my thoughts and ideas were listened to. And I'm wondering if, and I say this tentatively because I don't want to see frustrated officers, but perhaps a second workshop could be organised for those members who I'm sure for very good reasons couldn't make the first one. And maybe if a second one was organised, members who couldn't make that one might turn up. But I don't want to commit capacity that I have no.
And just to clarify, these were the political group workshops. Yeah, I guess it's easier when you're a smaller group such as I am with three. Our three members all managed to attend, so we were, we were pleased to be 100%.
So, yeah.
Can I again just just reassure members that, you know, we've been talking quite a bit about consultation engagement. We absolutely appreciate that the critical audience and ourselves as members. And absolutely, as we move, providing cabinet approve it to the next stage, we will be wanting to hold further workshops with members to basically help us develop the detailed proposals.
Thank you for that. Councillor Fox is next, please.
Yeah, I very much echo what councillor Champion said about not wanting things to narrow too much and wanting the public involved from the start. And there is a method of engagement that does get that does inform the public about red lines and boundaries within which decisions can be made, but also gets really good public buy-in. And that's community assemblies or citizens assemblies. And I wonder if, because one of the things that always surprises me is that this is a public building, but when I speak to members of the public, they, many of them don't even realise that they're welcome inside this building. It doesn't feel like an open place to them. And quite often they don't feel like their voices are heard. And we end up with situations where people come, they can ask a question, it's very formulaic. And I would love to see this building feel more welcome to members of the public. So I just wondered whether a community assembly or like a citizens' assembly, whether something through the soltition foundation, so that it does get, you know, a balanced representation of the sort of members of public in Norwich, whether that's been considered as a consultation method? And if so, you know, what are the reasons for that not being used? Or whether it's being costed to see if that, you know, how that works out against other consultation methods?
Thank you for that. Who wants to pick up that mark?
Well, welcome that suggestion. We want the, one of the next stages will be consultation engagement exercise in far greater detail. More than happy to engage with members on exactly what that process looks like and develop that with the with the team that we've got on board. So you really welcome that. I think, you know, we've also, we've already reached out to MAP. We've already done that as part of the previous to give them a heads up that we'll be wanting to engage with them at the next stage. So some of these recommendations really welcomed and, you know, we'll, 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 we'll let's just sort of look at these as options as we, as we build that sort of consultation programme. Obviously, what we're looking for is to get, to get the go ahead to move to that next stage. One of the first things we'll do is pull together a project implementation document for that next phase. And that's where we're going to start mapping out exactly what our consultation process looks like. So here or afterwards, by all means, welcome any views on that and we'll, we'll, we'll consider that and take that forward.
Right. Thank you very much for that. I've got councillor Calvert next.
Thank you very much, Chair. Forgive me councillor Stunard, one of your red lines was a bit unclear. When you said the sale of land, of course, sale freehold is not the only interest in land. There is also leasehold and easements. Can you confirm that you, your red line includes the non-transference of easements or leasehold interest in land? For instance, you could say I'm never going to sell City Hall. I have just put it out on a 999-year lease. Could you confirm that's not the case, please?
So suspicious, aren't you? Of course, we're not going to do that. I don't know why you're suspicious. Of course, we're not going to do that. What I say is what I mean, always.
Okay. Councillor Osborne.
Thanks. Reiterate what councillor Padda said about the sort of stakeholder engagement. I know councillor Stunard, you know, I've had discussions before in scrutiny about engagement, consultation and so on. I know that councillor Padda's got a lot of expertise in that. So I just second what councillor Padda said there. My other question is about digitalisation of council services. Now, the, obviously the council, the, for the council plan, the corporate plan says that we're going to become more of a digital council. But there's not really any reference in here to how the development of City Hall's future relates to the digitalisation of what the council offers and whether we're, you know, is how we're still going to have people coming in to the face-to-face services, et cetera. So how do those two strategies sit side by side?
If I could just answer that and I will then pass over to Andy Starkey to just provide some more detail. But I mean, very relevant point and absolutely key to making this building work efficiently in the future, both in terms of how we as council staff operate in the new, in a new environment. We will need to consider digitisation, but also in terms of how the building might be used and made sustainable for other users. We, the intention is absolutely to consider that during the next and more detailed stage. But Andy, I don't know if you want to say more?
Don't know how much more there is I can add to that, John. It was development as part of the next stage. I think the one element to build on that, John, is all of the design looks as a fundamental characteristic of flexibility. So a lot of the things will move, what's now will be different in 10 years, will be different in 15 years, will be different in 20 years. So the fundamental structure of the design, the floor, the ground floor, the interaction of services, we're embedding a lot of the technical design in strategic and policy-led sort of environment. So the, as those digitalisation strategies develop and deliver alongside the transformation strategies, alongside the development of the design, they will continually be integrated to test, to test those as they go through.
Mark.
Just, just to add to those responses that we are also looking at best practice. So we've, as officers, we've visited a number of other councils that have got similar grade two listed buildings of a similar age. And I think one thing we're keen to do as part of the next stage is engage members in that as well and actually get, get a selection of members from each party down to look at some examples elsewhere, look what other people are doing and just, you know, we're keen to look at that best practice, get member feedback from that practice that's happening elsewhere and, and understand how we can, you know, understand how we can build that into the thought process for the next stage and customer engagement.
So. Councillor Osborne.
Just on that, on that. But then there's all sorts of what we're doing, it's kind of a lot of it's focused on what councillors are saying or what councillors.
But just on that, I mean, we've already taken a variety of staff to see some other examples in terms of what, you know, what works so effectively, which has been actually very helpful, particularly for a range of different services to understand what the art of the possible is and what's doable. I think we do want to take members around as a specific group because I think, I come back to the point, you are most important, you know, how can, audience? Because not least, apart from making decisions, you know, but also things like your experience, you're using the building all the time. So how that works and how it could work, I think it's important that you're able to get the feel and get some ideas and help input into that process. But I think moving forward, and I think we've done, had quite a bit of discussion about this tonight. We, as been said, we will be developing a consultation and stakeholder engagement plan. And, you know, I think we are absolutely open to different mechanisms. And the key part for us is basically getting the ideas which will help us make the best decisions in terms of future proofing the building.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stunard.
Very quickly, so I'm not saying we don't want to take what councillors say is gospel or whatever, however you paraphrased what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that everybody's got an input to make and that needs to be made at the right moment. So if someone wants to suggest that this should be used as a, as a replacement for the open trust, there is a point at which that can, that, that can be input. But then it will be subject to viability testing alongside all the other suggestions that have been made. So it's actually about the point at which those suggestions are made. I think that's really important. And, you know, Jamie, you and I may have philosophical differences over consultation, but all I have ever done is quote to you Cabinet Office guidance, which we follow and we're required to follow.
Thank you. I think councillor Padda, you, did you have your hand up? No? Okay, that's fine. Councillor Champion then, please. And then I'm looking to get to a point where sort of want to finish this item fairly soon.
Okay, no, no, well, I won't, I won't be. I would just really encourage us as a council to engage fully with the consultation process. It's something that frustrates people in the city. And I'm not saying that as some kind of trip hazard. I'm saying that as a fact. I'm saying that people, I often speak to people who find out about the consultation the day after it's closed. On, not just from the city council, from the county council. You know, this isn't some like fairy tale I'm telling you just to upset you. Telling you this is a fact, yeah? If you want to counter misinformation, then you've got to really be clear with your communication. And the very fact that there is miscommunication sort of speaks to the fact that possibly click, you know, that if there's stories of hotels, why are there stories of hotels? It's because the narrative hasn't been shown. And I think what we have to do as a council, what we have to do as a council, and I apologise. Can I just really highlight the Nolan principles? Muttering under your breath and shaking your head at me is just rude, if I may. Okay, I'm sure that you're aware of the training and I'm sure that, you know, you're attended. So can we just be polite? People in this city often do not engage with consultations because they are unaware of them happening. This is a systemic issue. We're talking about the heart of city, of our, of our city. We're talking about City Hall. This isn't like some pet project. This is like a really big thing. And so I'm implore you, and I know the officers will endeavour to do their best. But I would really like us to make sure that we are really focused on our consultation so that we are far reaching. If we want to counter misinformation, then we've got to make sure that we are giving information. Yeah, this is, I can't say it clearer than that. And I'm sorry for.
I think you have said it quite clearly. Councillor Kendrick, I'm going to bring you in, but I really would like to move on to the next.
I will be very brief. I mean, the, the reason why people were talking about hotels about 20 years ago, it was a suggestion which I don't know if you think how seriously it was taken at the time people remember that. I hope you've actually read some of our press statements because I think they are actually quite clear.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Very clear. Just come back, Chair.
I mean, what I would, what I would just say.
Very, very clear. And if people are saying it's not, I hope they've read it. Because if they had read it, they would know it was absolutely clear.
I mean, the only thing I would just say very briefly on the issue of hotels, and I'll take no further comment on it. But it is in the above the line report that we've got here today. We have, we have published a document as a council that says considering the use of hotels is one of the things there. So it's, it's not, it's not necessarily surprising then that people get a, an idea that that might be one of the things the council is considering. Right. Members of the committee, do you have any questions that are on the exempt papers that you would need an answer back that would belie or would, would, would give publicity to the information in there? Okay. It does. That's an inter. Right, okay. That's fair enough. We would normally, but it is linked to this item. Yes, okay. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much. So we've had a request that some of the questions may indicate publicising bits of the report that would disclose information relating to the financial or business affairs of a particular person, including the authority holding that information as in paragraph three, schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. So on that basis, could I have agreement from the committee that we can exclude the public, please? All those in favour? Okay, thank you very much and thank you very much to the members of the public. We now need to exclude you. When we've had this discussion, we will then have a brief discussion on the Norfolk Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee report. But it will be very brief and it is in the papers. So councillor Maguire, there has been a resolution to include.
Can we just have a short recess, please?
Well, what I was going to do was have a recess because our, our rules of procedure are two hours and then we have recess. So I was hoping to. Are we streaming in now? Okay, welcome back, everyone. During the, the last item was a very thorough and wide-ranging discussion around City Hall reimagined. We had a brief session where we had excluded the members of public during that session. We looked at the recommendations and members were unanimous in agreeing for backing what cabinet are going to be making a decision on next Wednesday. So thank you very much for that. We'll now move to item nine, which is our report from the city council's representative on the Norfolk Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Unfortunately, councillor Galvin isn't here, able to be here this evening to answer any questions. But we have a very thorough report from her. So if I can just take that as noted, councillor Maguire.
Yeah, just briefly, I think it'd be worth passing our thanks on to councillor Gunn for the report. And the Norwich-related issues would make a brilliant topic for scrutiny to look at.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on that? Great. Well, that's, that's noted then. So at this stage, we now come on to our supplementary agenda. So we just need to resolve that under paragraph three, schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972, we need to exclude the members of the public because in not doing so, we disclose information in respect of which there could be claims of legal. The wording has outlined on page three of the agenda.